Because those folks couldn't meet with us tonight.
Correct, or one team member could.
So we're in the wireless bylaw discussion, discuss next steps and timeline for potential town meeting presentation.
Could I just ask you to speak up a little bit because when you're hooking down, it's hard to hear.
Oh, I'm sorry. So what I said was the wireless bylaw is next on our agenda.
Thank you.
And all we have here is discuss next steps and timeline for potential town meeting presentation.
May I ask a question, Mr. Chair?
Not yet, no.
Okay.
We'll perhaps open it up to the floor after our discussion here. So an important thing to know in these meetings is these are, they're open meetings, okay? People from the public in town normally can't comment. It's a working meeting of the planning board. The board doesn't be able to discuss like we did with the solar bylaw.
I just wanted to make a point of information about the agenda might be slightly incorrect. This is actually about a special town meeting, not the town meeting. The reason I point that out is the special town meeting is six weeks from now. The town meeting is next spring.
It says that potential town meeting presentation could be any town meeting.
Yeah.
There's no way this bylaw is going to be ready for the November.
Okay, I'm sorry. I was at the select board meeting last week and that was my impression. Okay.
I don't think we're anywhere here.
Well, we have our discussion of the timeline.
That's right.
Thank you, sir. Respond to that, you know? And I believe that it's public information that at least at this point in time, the select board are talking about it November 17th.
What's the date?
November 17th. But that, as I say, was very recent.
Right.
Again, could you speak up please?
Oh, I'm sorry. No, the only thing I'm saying is that it is public information through other committees in town right now that the special town meeting that we have usually the first week of November is heading more towards November 17th. But I'm not even sure how hard that date is, depending on some other things.
A special town meeting is what?
So every year, yeah, every, our town bylaw requires, calls for our annual town meeting to happen on, like the first Thursday of May every year. But the select board can call for special town meetings throughout the year. They are not on the first week of May. They can happen anytime.
For a reason.
For special reasons, yeah.
And they can be as simple as a simple appropriation, one agenda item, it's a 20-minute town meeting that's in the town and authorized spending on a particular item and that ended up having to change. The voters have to approve that. So those are, you know, a special town meeting doesn't have to be anything.
The bylaw, you're talking about rewriting for wireless. You think it won't have any chance of.
So can we discuss now before we?
Right. Oh, yeah, sure.
One other quick example. We've already had a special town meeting this year, 2022, which is, which was something in June to do just what Tom mentioned, it was to pass some money quickly to meet some deadlines.
Right.
So save the hot pot.
So I think the reason this is on the agenda, and Gwen, you can refer to me if you like, was that after the last meeting where Gwen told us the select board was, I don't know the words where she used exactly, but very eager to see us complete this bylaw. I saw Chris in Town Hall and I asked him what that was all about. I sort of wanted to know what was being said among the select board about wireless and the wireless bylaw. And sure enough, he said that the sentiment was, and I actually ended up going watching the September 7th select board meeting as well, where it was discussed briefly just a little bit. Basically, the selectmen are reporting that this summer, they're kind of talking about the tourist season. The number one issue slash problem that they're hearing about is lack of cell service in town. And that, you know, it's, it was their number one issue, like that, you know, they're very eager to see this addressed.
How we wish they would do the bylaw themselves.
No, I defended our board and explained to Chris why it was taking quote unquote so long, which I think is not really the right way to say it. But I personally took in this, you know, idea that, yeah, it's just, it's really bad out there. There are no bars. And the question, I, you know, I had been looking at what David Maxson sent us in terms of the markups to the bylaw, which we did work a long time on and which was in pretty good shape. I actually met with Sue yesterday to walk her through the bylaw. So she was up to speed with the work we had done. And we looked at some of David Maxson's changed and throughout a couple of ideas to present the board about how to resolve those and just get some, you know, notes ready for you guys. And I think the question, I mean, I think personally that if we, you know, the big issues that are really outstanding are not the framework of the bylaw. And even including David Maxson's input, you know, they're, they're six of one, half doesn't have the other in some cases. In other cases, it's like, yeah, we liked what he said, you know, and waiters, that's, we got that administrative approvals, we got that. The big questions are where the zone for the technology, the zoning, like the use table, setbacks, and height. And then, you know, maybe any other protections we can, you know, we can benchmark, a little bit of benchmarking to see what other communities are doing and just make sure we're covering all our bases. I kind of felt like, honestly, I know we're going to see some mapping from David at the next meeting, but the mapping is informational. It's not really quote unquote, it's not building network for us. And it doesn't even necessarily have input to these basic requests, zoning, use table, setbacks, and heights. I guess I sort of felt like, it's not like, you know, we'd all said before we couldn't make town meeting. And it wasn't because we weren't close to being able to get to that point. It was just that we didn't have enough meetings between now and town meeting. I mean, I kind of think we need three meetings, something like that, and others could take a look and determine. And we could be presenting at town meeting.
Three meetings, then the public hearing?
Well, the public hearing gets nervous. Well, again, so this is the trade-off, you know? I think the question is, how, you know, whether we feel like we should try to be responsive to what, to the feedback we're getting that there are people in town who have been eagerly awaiting this bylaw and would rather see it get passed, you know, if it was all humanly possible to get it passed sooner rather than later, given that we've been working on it for on and off two years. And that it is so far along in its framing up. And I think I'm not talking about the small cells in the, I'm really just talking about the macro bill, which is inclusive of everything off, not on the public right of way. In the public right of way, we've kind of already got covered with the process in Town Hall, although we could come back and like make that better. So the question is, I mean, Chris said to me, he said, as Tom will know from working on the permanent buildings committee, sometimes you just got to meet, like you got to have a couple of like meetings out of sequence just to get something done and bring it to the finish line. So that's why this is on the agenda. And I understand there are pros and cons. You know, we don't want to be seen rushing anything for sure.
Well, I don't like, well, because the framework is in place, we definitely have, it isn't rushing.
Exactly. It's really these final three decisions and then signing off on whatever verbiage, you know, not getting picky even about like perfectionism and keep doing more research, you know?
It's almost stopping.
Agreeing that our framework, and again, I've been doing some more benchmarking of other towns bylaws and I'm making up charts. It's Excel spreadsheet, multiple tabs. So we can see how different towns are handling it. I'm not seeing really anybody doing anything massively different than what our bylaw does. So some have different setbacks, some have different height requirements, some have a little language here and there that I think is pretty cool. But, you know, everyone's got the same thing happening.
Right.
So that's my question is like whether we make a push to meet three times in the next two weeks, three weeks and get it done.
It's interesting. Try to actually have it ready for a little bit.
Because even if you get a bylaw passed, you still have to then wait for the AG to approve it. And it doesn't really guarantee that any project is going to go ahead and get started. Otherwise, you're waiting until May and it means you're just going to go through yet another season with no wireless coverage.
That's the end of the week.
Sue can comment. She saw where we were in terms of the bylaw.
Jim?
Jim, I'm sorry.
So the point, one of the points I was going to make is what Pam just made, which is we could have a bylaw tomorrow, doesn't it? How many projects have come to town saying they want to put up a wireless tower, but they can't because our bylaw is a problem. There just haven't been any projects. Mostly because there hasn't been much market for it, right? But they'll get to it, but we're low on priorities.
Could you speak up a little bit?
Sure. Seems to me that the bylaw is not preventing, no one's come in to say that they want to do it, but the bylaw is preventing them because they have a special permit or anything like that. We should get a special, we should get a bylaw together. It's not going to solve the problem. If the selectmen really want to solve the problem, we would just have a Wi-Fi network around town. It's not that big a town. The town could put one in for not very much money. And it would be ready for this coming summer. So I think there are two separate issues.
I think that in our discussions, Gwen has, it's not recent, but we have had indications that tower companies are not coming to us because they know our bylaw is protected. Sue, did you want to add to anything that I said, having looked at the David Maxson comments in particular?
Yeah, no, I appreciate having the sort of essentially the tutorial, given that I wasn't in on this from the beginning. It's kind of a steep learning curve, but I would be in favor of having three meetings in less than three weeks to see if we could finish, finish this up. You know, I think if it's, if it's done, it's done. And the select board, I think will be pleased that it's, that it's done. And there, you know, if there are no takers, then that, that's not on us. But I, pardon me? Yeah, do you say?
That's right. I agree, yeah.
I think, I know, I'm willing, I mean, I'm every day out straight at work, but I'm willing to do what I, to do it, meet three times in a short amount of time and try to get this, this done. And I do, I do agree that it does boil down to those three issues. And I know it, you know, puts people into a, maybe they're back over against the wall in terms of finding the time, carving out the time to get this done. But I just think it's never going to be perfect and it's never going to satisfy everybody. But you guys have done a tremendous amount of work on the frameworks. And I think we can come to some kind of consensus about the three sort of material outstanding issues. I'd like to try, I'd like to try to get it done.
Well, the other thing that comes to mind for me as we're talking about this is that just like the special town meeting that kind of, I mean, we had our annual town meeting in May and then a month later, there was a special town meeting to satisfy something. So even if we couldn't quite get to the finish line in November because of, you know, having to properly advertise for a public hearing after we finish our meetings and get everything out, I think I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be upset about asking the board of selectmen if this is a priority for them than to ask for a special town meeting for this. Because I think that there is a feeling that if we can do something before May, that's good.
But that doesn't mean, and realistically, even if we do that, I'm not opposed to meeting extra, you know, to try to drive this towards November. That's fine. I think it's a little unrealistic, but just given the way things go. I mean, it's less than eight weeks away. And given the, you know, the noticing requirements for the public hearing and all that.
And other commitments from other committees, for instance, that you're on.
Yeah, yeah. Kind of lost my track where I was going with this, but that's all right. But that doesn't mean, you know, even if, say that all happens, we get, go to a special town meeting in November, the bylaw passes, no problems. It doesn't automatically mean that by next summer, all our wireless problems are going to be solved.
No, of course not.
You know, that's, I think it's kind of ridiculous to think that way too. Because it's going to, you know, a carrier has to come, propose a project, it's going to take time to construct. I mean, even after that happened, say the bylaw passes, the AG OKs it takes several weeks. Then right after that, a carrier submits a permit for a project, it's going to be two years before that tower's turned down. Just the reality of it. Well. But I'm not, like I said before, I'm not opposed to meeting extra. So if we want to do, you know, the next three Tuesdays in a row, that's fine with me. I don't have my phone on me, so I can't look at calendars, so.
I think we have to ask Chris too, like what is the deadline? I don't know if you know this.
Yeah, it's a little shorter for the warrant for a special town meeting.
But you need a warrant of language.
You just, right, you just need to have on the warrant that there will be inaction. But what we refer to in the warrant usually is a copy on file in the clerk's office that people can look at. You, the planning board, you can actually have your public hearing like the day before the town meeting itself.
Not good practice.
It's like very, I think we've, we've cut it very close before and you would notice accordingly.
Take that public input and then go back.
You make a report, yeah. Right, and we, yeah, we always end up, I think, making changes very close to the town meeting.
I mean, I think this definitely gives us the deadline.
So we want to set an agenda for like the next three Tuesdays for the.
Are we supposed to have something on file by what date?
I'm not sure what the exact.
And then the other question I had is what's, what's left on days?
Yeah, I think it's fewer days for a special town meeting.
I want to say like when I, I think when I watched the September 7th meeting.
Do you know, Sonia?
No.
Okay.
Something about like October 20th. But I don't know if that was in contemplation of a date they had in mind or that got drawn later or not. We need to get this information, obviously.
Yeah, we can get that.
I was hearing through other committees, you know, they were talking about, I mean, the third had been, the third had been, what was on the calendar, you know, over the course of the year because that fits what we've done in the past. But then there was some talk of the 10th and then it went to the 17th.
Yeah, exactly.
So, you know, how that all rolls out in terms of deadlines right now, it's a little hard to know what is required by the state or what's required by something, but we can find that out.
What do we have left with Mr. Maxson's PO? How much, how much is his time left?
We have a fair amount of his time left, yeah. And we were, he's planning on attending the October 11th meeting.
That's next Tuesday.
That's next Tuesday.
Oh, is he going to be here personally?
I don't know if he'll be in here in person or on Zoom, however we're doing it.
We did talk about looking at his mapping.
Yeah, he would talk about his mapping.
I think that's important, yeah.
Yeah.
Continue on. If he's involved, they'll keep costs down.
Yeah.
More time out on that.
So for the next meeting, I, like I said, like Sue and I looked up the language. How about if I try to pull together packages for everybody that it would enable us to move through materials, including David's changes, David's recommendations, kind of more rapidly, as rapidly as we can, so we don't get stuck in a line by line. So it's real clear, you know, not just comment bubbles. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and that, what we have now is marked up is.
It's hard to read.
It's hacked up and it's hard to read.
Yeah, exactly. So maybe I can come up with the, you know, charts. And Gwen, I don't know if we can get Deanna's help if we end up having multiple pages, putting them in binders or something like that, so we can page through well. And then, like I said, in response to comments we received before, I started, I've already looked at a bunch, but I'm going to put it all on paper, to make charts of different municipalities. I talked to Gwen about the list she recommended where I could look at their bylaws and see how are they handling setbacks, heights, zoning, and what are some other interesting things that they're doing, which we may or may not decide we have need to incorporate or not, you know, just let go. And I can have that, I'll have a deadline to have that ready for next week, which I think should be helpful because then you'll see whether, we can see whether, you know, what we come up with is in a ballpark of what other communities are wanting.
The special town meeting warrant, and I found this on Google from the Secretary of State website. For a special town meeting, the warrant must be available at least 14 days before the special town meeting. So you would want a fairly final draft available to put in the clerk's office and on the website.
Is that business days, you think, or probably calendar dates?
I don't know. It doesn't specify on this. We can find out. But like usually what they would do is they would approve it at a select board meeting and then post it after that.
Like October 30th and November 1st is better than October 20th, gives you a little more time.
And what's the noticing for the public?
It's two weeks in advance, like two consecutive weeks, we would publish it in the Berkshire Eagle. And then it would be posted on the website and on the bulletin board.
And we have to have something finished in order to have a public hearing. Because you have to have something on file as well.
It's good practice to have it finished because I, like, the whole point is kind of like, you're, yeah, because you're taking it to town meeting. That's why you're having the public hearing, to let people know. They can ask questions or make comments. In the past, you've had like an info session and a public hearing. And the info session was kind of like, sometimes it was less baked.
Sorry, what's last one?
Less baked, yeah. Like you're. Yeah, but, yeah, I think just doing the public hearing is all you need to do.
I think people from whom we're likely to get comments will be sitting with us, so.
Yeah.
The info session would be necessary.
Yeah.
I think there's a lot of interest, yeah, in town. So we'll see how many interests show up. Can we be sure we circulate correspondence as it comes in? I know that there was that one letter that came in recently. Gwen?
There's one that was kind of added to your meeting packet.
Oh, it's in here?
Yeah, it should be. It was posted on the website too.
The last thing that you mentioned?
Yes.
Oh, the last thing. Oh, it's this guy. Oh, this one. Oh, okay. Well, there it is. Thank you.
I want to buy out that.
It's in the paper, in this paper. Something small of this. So that gives us a ballpark kind of on schedule of what we're up to. And so we need to all mark our calendars appropriately to make sure that we don't miss anything too much. But as I say, I don't think, I think if we're close and if we overshoot it, and who knows? If other issues that are in the current warrant for the 17th are necessarily hard in place right now, that, you know, we could do solar too. We have work out.
That's not, wasn't.
I know, I'm sorry. Don't try to kill us.
Oh, we've had these on our plate for so long, like all the balls juggling in the air.
After this comes sun. We're going to finish sun. We have to finish sun. That's going to be longer than this or anything else.
That's right. But some people are going to do it either for the next, or for the future, but anyway.
So we're going to plan on the next three Tuesdays.
Assuming it meets the timing, sure.
So we better say, let's do the next three Tuesdays and not make any promises.
Okay, you have the first schedule.
The next three Tuesdays are fine.
We're going to do the next three Tuesdays and not make any promises.
As long as we do it hybrid, you know, because I'm traveling a bit now, so, okay.
So what, if you see Chris tell him, we're not making any promises?
Yeah, because after that timeline we just talked through, I feel less confident about getting this done.
Okay.
Responsibly.
Okay.
In time for a town meeting, it's going to be on the 17th.
It's tight. It's really tight. Yeah.
Oh, I know.
Let's meet the next three Tuesdays and see where we end up. You know, after we meet with David next week, we may be able to finish things up the following Tuesday and then have Quinn notice the public hearing. And then if we think things are in good shape, then it may happen.
When do you guys realistically read your materials? The day before? I'm just trying to understand what kind of timeline to give myself to get homework done. The day before the meeting or on the weekend before the meeting?
Sometimes I'm reading it like a few hours before.
Well, if you had it in advance, would you like the opportunity to read it on the weekend?
Yes.
If you had it? Okay, so I'm going to aim to have you read something by Friday.
This Friday?
A package. I'm going to try to organize things.
And we're posting all meeting packets on the planning board website. Okay.
Which is on, which piggybacks on the town.
It's townoflenix.com and then you find the planning board page.
And there are all these meetings that you're talking about will be open?
Yes, they're all open, yes.
Open meetings, but not a public hearing. So if the board, if we choose, they comment from the public, then we'll open it up. We'll most likely do that. But we've got to keep it kept under control. Because if we're going to get this done, the board has to work it, deliberate, discuss. And then we'll take the bulk of our comments probably at the public hearing. So does anybody now have anything germane to the wireless bylaw?
Yes, I have one quick one. Have you received?
Identify yourself.
Yeah, okay. Have you received a convocation of where people are suggesting to you or to David, you know, it could go here, it could go here. And then he was, he was going to take those suggestions and say, oh, and then you'll go out and say, this is feasible, this one isn't.
You think he's taken, he's mapped some of that?
Yes.
Where, and, and people haven't come to the board. I think we've talked about potential town-owned properties ourselves, not just random areas in town where towers could go. These were town-owned parcels.
So is the purpose still well high on the list?
I don't think we've specifically discussed that, but it's other, other town-owned buildings. And again, that's not town-owned from what we just looked at tonight.
Right. So that's what we'll see next week when we meet with David and he'll show us what this looks like. And it's not, again, it's not a plan. It's not that we're a plan. It's like informational, almost like, because we are not making a, we're not what's called spot zoning for these things.
No.
We just wanted to see what it would look like.
Yeah, it's the one who makes the consent and says, this is where I want to do this. And then we have a certain amount of flexibility in working with that applicant or the ZDA does or whoever we went and said.
So that isn't a town-owned building? Does that mean it will not go on that group?
Nothing means any, nothing means anything. That's not a question.
That's not what we're doing, yeah.
You can prioritize, like I think the bylaw now does prioritize co-locating. You can prioritize, like I think the bylaw now does prioritize co-location on existing buildings.
That's about it.
So that would prioritize the, any building in the C districts.
Who makes the decision?
It's between the applicant and whoever would be the authority, the permanent reigning authority.
The zoning board.
The zoning board of appeals, the carrier. And the carrier would, would, the carrier is going to know where their tower is going to work the best.
Right.
So they're, they'll pick a spot and approach that property owner or buy the property if they own it already, or if they can park whatever. You know, there's a, there's a many different scenarios, but based on what we ultimately come up with, with for, set, we can't, and again, we have to be very careful about, we can't unreasonably prohibit it because that lands you and plans the town and land court, and the town will lose that case. And then, and then that opens it up more to the carrier, and then they take.
But it would basically be helping the carrier say, this would be my favorite spot.
Exactly.
And then.
Then here's how it meets your rules.
But then we have them as nudging around that, depending on the flexibility that the board has written in around sites. Based, particularly on Maxon's discussion about that, that sometimes lesser areas or other areas work better.
Correct.
Or work just as well, but aren't as intrusive or obvious, whatever, visual.
Oh, yeah, go ahead. Just identify yourself and.
My name is Diane Sheldon. I'm a tenure terrorist.
Okay.
I have a couple of concerns, one of which is the speed with which this is required. I know you've done a lot of work for the last two years and I really appreciate that. However, now there's this sudden push to get everything done for this possible November 17th meeting, and it sounds like it could be problematic getting everything done, time still fulfilling requirements that have to be done. I have a little concern about, somebody David Maxon said at the last meeting, which was that he did not feel the town setbacks were a good idea. He just spent an hour talking about setbacks for solar, where there's no setbacks for cell antennas or towers. Why is that? That makes no sense whatsoever. I don't remember him saying that we wouldn't have setbacks for towers.
Well, there were, David Maxon said he didn't want them, and you seem to all be going along with what David Maxon.
I think what he said is he advised that a 1,500-foot setback for a large tower would probably zone them out of the community.
Right.
And he doesn't advise them for any town, because you don't want to exclude them from the entire town.
Okay.
That's a specific setback.
Yeah.
I'd like to pass.
And tonight, the board isn't really getting into the content of the bylaw. They're just talking about the scheduling of how to work toward a special town meeting.
The E part of the bylaws were setbacks rather, that are in place in three towns, Ray Barrington, Otis, and Stockbridge. And they're going to include mentioning things like Vernal ponds, because we know that if we see that, our preparation affects all of them. So obviously, these towns have done their homework, and I'm hoping the people are also going yours to recognize that this is, this is an issue that even though we're not supposed to mention health, obviously it is, because these towns have considered these things, and they are part of setbacks legally.
So I think all the stuff about wetlands is there whether we say it or not.
Yeah, because you can't encroach on a wetland with construction equipment.
And because you can't build in a wetland without a conservation approval.
Right.
I just find it very interesting that there is no mention, or really, there's no push to do setbacks, and yet you just spent an hour talking about setbacks.
Well, I think there is, I think that was completely inaccurate. There is, there is setbacks that are considered in this bylaw. We just haven't settled on what those setbacks would be yet. And again, as Gwen stated, we're kind of starting to get down the rabbit hole. All we were going to be discussing for the agenda tonight is the scheduling of the next meetings, but then not the specific content. So we'll take this now, because you passed it out to us under advisement, and then anything else more specific like this, we'll have to wait till next week, David's here, and then in the subsequent meetings.
I'd like to request a copy of the map that David Maxon was supposed to have. That he was going to send it to you right away. Did you ever get that?
We did get it. It will be posted for the next meeting.
For the next meeting?
Yes, when it will be an agenda item.
Yeah, but when will the map be available for us to see?
The Friday before the October 11th meeting.
The Friday before when?
The Fri, so, yeah, this coming Friday.
Go ahead. Just identify. We know who you are, just for the record.
I'm Scott Barrow, actually John Scott Barrow, at 14 Old Stockbridge Road.
Is that new?
No, I've been, I, it was, I never called your kid by his middle name. It's been a problem for. My new grandson, his middle name is Scott.
Oh, dear.
So we got the same problem going forward. So what I was thinking, what's sort of frustrating for me, I was for the last, I've been involved in this for a year, over a year now, but.
So that's a way.
Yeah, I know. I'm a little curious, I mean, on all this, I'm always completely blown away by the amount of energy and effort. So what, what I've been trying to get you guys to do is talk to someone who has a different opinion, who doesn't think that, you know, they've never met a radio frequency that they didn't love, think it was just fine. And so we still haven't done that. You've always talked to is people that are all about making sure that the telecoms are comfortable coming into town. That's why I thought, listening to Jim's comment about a wifi setup, I thought, you know, we're trying to please tourists. The truth is, if everybody would just switch to 18T, we wouldn't have any trouble at town. So if right now you're evaluating one through this, at the end getting here, and you still never talk to anybody who has a different opinion about what might be an option here that isn't all about making sure the telecoms are as pleased as possible and set up what's good for the community, for all of us that live here all the time and work here all the time. So there's, it's, it's really disappointing that we're at this point, and that hasn't happened. And they're available.
I, I will say one thing, that, you know, obviously, we come into these meetings, there has been a lot of information sent to us, you know, over the past year, and for the most part, I believe that everyone has read it and sat in on, you know, I have a copy of the New Hampshire report and I've heard Mr., is it Mr. Chamberlain as well?
Yeah.
Of that one, you know, so we participated in hearing that information and have, in many cases, you know, as we've grappled with trying to understand this whole thing, which is, you know, not exactly my cup of tea, you know, we're beginning to get more of a feel for, oh, it's not just a tower, it's a wireless facility that makes it problematic, or, you know, or where, you know, exactly the right way might be for different kinds of utilities and, you know, all of these complications. But, so the, the information, you know, has come to us. We haven't perhaps had a public discussion about it, because basically we're focusing on our little activity, which is the bylaw. And, you know, it's interesting what Jim had to say about the wifi tonight, certainly. Maybe that will come up in a meeting coming up. And now that you've mentioned this, Scott, perhaps, you know, that conversation is overdue. What are the alternatives? You know, most of us have been out there reading all kinds of stuff that's coming up, and, you know, is it five years down the line or 10 years down the line, or is it satellite-based, or the, you know, I mean, this is pretty complicated for a layperson and understanding the timeline, you know, everybody in this room, I'm pretty sure, has a phone in their pocket or a pocketbook. So we're all reliant on some way of getting these waves of information and communication and trying to figure out what is possible and what's doable in terms of our own community Lennox.
Well, I, I understand that, and I know that a lot of the stuff that, well, I've sent or I've given some that you have read and taken in. And my thought was that, wouldn't it be important for somebody with a different outlook to actually look at the bylaw and go through it? I tried reading the bylaw, oh my God, I don't, the fact that you came up with this, it's like, yeah, amazing. But also, it was, you know, primarily, you're working with court first, who has, you know, everybody wants to make sure this can happen. But basically, it seems like it's so that the telecoms want to come here, as opposed to what's, where the pitfalls that we've got here that we might not be able to get out later on, get rid of later on, and you guys are not going to tell you that because they think it's great stuff, and maybe it's not all great stuff. So it'd be good to have another opinion from an attorney that specializes in this. They could go through it and read and go, well, what if he did this? Or if you do this, you know, this might happen. But you're not going to get that from people that are so pro-industry.
So Scott, I did, the last attorney he sent us in the letter, he mentioned that he contributed to the Village of Scarsdale zoning bylaw. I pulled that up and I had gone through it and benchmarked it. I think the same bylaw was also used in Pelham, New York. It's almost identical language. I spoke to the town land use clerk a little bit about it to see how it was going. And so I did, you know, and I even went to the ART website, which he mentioned, his daughter working for ART. So I have been, in my research, benchmarking those kinds of bylaws as well. I'll tell you, Scarsdale and Pelham don't, we'll talk about it next week, to see the benchmark results. But I would, I would also say, you know, we feel like we're a little bit in the crucible here as far as, you know, people who are desperate for the coverage, businesses, et cetera, and community folks, the board of selectmen and the opposition, you know, perhaps bring the issue of alternative approaches to the feet of the select board.
That's pretty obvious right now that that's one of the places we should have always been going along with, past long weekends.
Yeah.
You should share some of it.
It's a difficult question, you know, figure out. It's a much better alternative. I mean, I almost feel like it's very similar to the rest of the river issue, you know, like, nobody likes any of the solutions. They're horrible. But on the other hand, you know, can we wait another 25 years? Because the river of all this stuff is flowing right by us in our communities, you know, and you're just in this terrible position of not being able to fight the, you know, the big guns.
Well, is anybody here planning on moving because of their cell service?
Yeah, but you're already on.
Yeah, I mean, Scott, again, you cannot effectively prohibit the provision of cellular personal wireless services. And if you look at the Drive Test app, we've got the mass of Lennox, which is not giving any coverage. So we do have a problem, and we have to like address it. That's what our role is. And, you know, like wifi network in the village ain't going to get everywhere else. So, I mean, that's what we're here to do.
And so.
We're listening to you, but we've also got the technology, we've also got what we got.
Oh, I know that. I'm just trying to, you know, I'm off in Switzerland whenever possible, so.
Yeah.
And plus the fact, you know, that I really appreciate what you do, and, and, and I could never do this. I would feel crazy. So it would be, I'm so uncr-
Going crazy on my side.
And my proper description on some things.
So I would actually say to your points and the ones we spoke before, try to find some differentiation in our approach between cell service and solar. Actually, I think it's exactly the same, which is, how do we maximize its benefits and minimize its impact and write a, a regulation that is not going to get struck down? That's it. The moving parts are a little different. People have, there's a wider divergence of opinion around cell phone numbers around solar, but there's also some pretty, there's more restrictions as to what we can do with a cell phone because of the FCC. So, but that's all we can do.
Why don't we? Yeah, I know, and I just, I don't want this to continue on. It is after 8:30. Are your comments specific to the scheduling of our next series of meetings, or are they more in line with the specifics of our, of the bylaw? Because I don't want to keep going down the rabbit hole here to the specifics of the bylaw. We can address, so, is next, next week?
Well. So a little bit of one or the other.
Can you just identify yourself?
Yeah, so my name is Corbin Jemari. I live 980 East Street, but I really wish.
At Lennox?
At Lennox, but I really wish to be back in Pittsfield. The reason why I'm not in Pittsfield is because cell tower was built next to my house. 20 people got sick, including myself and my children, so now we're living in Lennox. One of the biggest fears that I have living in Lennox is that a cell tower is going to be built next to my property and I'll be forced to move again, and this will continue. When I bought my property on Alma Street in Pittsfield, it was my forever home, my retirement home, and I did not expect we would be forced to choose between our home and our health. The reason why the tower was built in Pittsfield was because at the time, there was not strong wireless protective zoning bylaws that would have prevented it from going where it is. In 2019, those wireless zoning bylaws were updated, and the tower would not have been built. It was permitted in 2017. I have my open comments from the select board meeting in, back in August 18th, 2021, where I say I have been asking the select board for eight weeks to meet with a different attorney to discuss this issue. So I echo Scott's sentiments of, we're trying to do these three meetings on the next three Tuesdays to push this forward. And yet, for over a year and a half, I've been asking for you guys one hour with one alternative attorney who can help Lennox stay connected but protected. We all need services. You guys all have wireless devices. I use a landline. I keep my phone on airplane mode. My children can't be exposed because they literally vomit when they are exposed. We've had six neighbors move, and we have other people who are sick. So yes, we need to have structures, but they can be placed at distances that are safer. I'm simply asking the town Lennox to meet with one of these attorneys. Perhaps they can do that within your timeframe, within these next three weeks, but I don't understand why it has not been a priority so far.
Who were the attorneys? You know what, actually, can we just do this next week?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Let's just do this next week.
Yeah, I agree, because you have this discussion at this point, it was specific to the scheduling of the next series of meetings. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we settle on the next three Tuesdays, and then we'll take it from there. All right, move on. Approval of.